So, customarily before we start our meetings, we remember people who have made extraordinary contributions to the city. Tonight is especially painful. We're going to remember a high school senior, Caleb Happ, who took his own life last week. There's an obituary in today's Daily News that I really encourage people to read to understand how his friends and family would like us to honor him. But tonight, let's have a moment of silence to mourn his loss. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the roll.
Roll call for the meeting of January 13th, 2020. Counselor Devlin?
Here.
Counselor Khan?
Present.
Counselor Lane?
Here.
Counselor McCauley?
Present.
Counselor Shan?
Present.
Counselor Tontar?
Present.
Counselor Vogel?
Present.
Counselor Wallace?
Present.
Counselor Zee?
Present.
Counselor Connell?
Present.
Counselor President, Argument?
Here.
We are all present, Mr. President.
Have any late-file items tonight?
There are no late-file items, President, but there is a version two of the minutes on the counselor's desk. Essentially, the only difference is reciting the actual voters for the president election.
Okay, public comment? Looks like four. Okay, I'm going to call each person's name, please. When you come to the microphone, give your home address, and you'll each have two minutes per speaker. We're not going to run a timer, but please try to hold to that. The first speaker is Andrew Cassin.
Thank you, welcome, new counselors. Andrew Cassin, 240 Merrimack Street, also chairman of the Newburyport Harbor Commission. I'm here this evening just to speak really quickly. In your packets, which will be two readings, is a new harbor commissioner alternate that we've requested be appointed, Mr. George Sasse. I just wanted to say myself, and you'll hear from him quickly, that we're very excited to have a man of this caliber and his background to not only be on the Harbor Commission, but also be in this city. And we're extremely lucky, and I highly request that you appoint him. Thank you.
Thank you.
George Sasse.
Hello. Good evening, councilmembers. George Sasse, 37 Jefferson Street in Newburyport. So, as Andrew said, I'm a recent -- my wife and I have just moved here in August. And after being my last 30, 35 years in the boat industry, as well as in media, I was a former editor-in-chief of Yachting Magazine, former editor-in-chief of Paramoriah Magazine, as well as the editorial director for Active Interest Media, where we were in charge of magazines such as Soundings Magazine, Passage Maker. And I was the executive producer of a television show called Angles Journal Television, which was run on the Discovery Channel. So, that, as well as just being a general boating nut, are all kind of talents, I hope, and skills and a background to serve this position. And I'm excited to be here. After the last 10 years of moving everywhere from Singapore to Newport to Colorado, we're excited to have -- or just to kind of lay down some roots here. And if you guys have any questions, I believe my contact numbers in this package, and I'd be happy to answer them. So, thank you.
Thank you, and welcome.
Thank you. Janet Morris.
Hi, my name is Janet Morris. I live at 288 Merrimack Street. And I'm seeking to join the board of the Tree Commission to help with the grant writing. So, I welcome any questions that you have.
Thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Thank you.
Julie Masys. Sorry if I mispronounced your name.
It's okay. Hi, I live at 2 Wildwood Drive in Newburyport. And I submitted the proposal to ban the herbicide Roundup, also known as glyphosate. So, the World Health Organization has classified this herbicide as a probable carcinogen. And in the courts, millions -- the company that makes Roundup has paid, I think, hundreds of millions of dollars to people who proved in court that they got cancer because of this herbicide. And I was glad to find out that in Newburyport, glyphosate and Roundup has been banned on city-owned land last summer. And I think we should go further and ban it also everywhere in our city, including its use by landscaping companies that take care of people's lawns and the sale of Roundup as well. So, I think it's very important because cancer is the leading cause of death in Massachusetts. And probably everybody here knows somebody who's been affected by it. And I think we need to do more for prevention. And also, I would like to read a statement that was sent to me by another resident. It's very short. So, actually, I posted about it on Facebook, and the post got more than 70 likes. And this lady, Carolyn Forbes, 171 Story Avenue, she sent a statement. "I am writing to support the proposed ban on glyphosate in Newburyport. It is highly restricted or banned in many other countries. I have concerns over its environmental impact, harm to bee populations, and potential serious health effects. I support the banning of use by commercial landscapers and the like. I believe Newburyport should adopt natural and alternative practices." Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Mayor's comment.
May I be President, I believe members of the City Council, welcome, new counselors, welcome to the 2020 term. I look forward to working with all of you. And in terms of my update, you can see I'm trying really hard not to do paper to the new counselors and those old counselors who still have not opted for a laptop. We certainly will give you one, if you would like one, to help reduce the amount of paper that we are using in the city. So, please just let me know if you would like me to order you a laptop. It's a long update. I will just highlight, because you have it in front of you, because we have a lot to talk about. Clipper City Rail Cleanup. There are a couple spots that look like are going to have to be readdressed, small spots, and then there'll be a further assessment. But things are moving along, and we anticipate having this project complete by the end of January. I'm very, very pleased to, excuse me, announce that we have received a $400,000 Complete Streets grant. This is tremendous news, especially since we only got $72,000 in the municipal vulnerabilities preparedness grant for when we had applied for 1.7 there. So, that will probably do a little bit of design for behind the rail trail and protecting the berm. But this is an important grant. Those were two we were really looking forward to. And this one will help us finish that connection of Phase III of the rail trail from Parker, cross-state, figure out how to get around the rotary, and then connect with the original origin of the rail trail. We had met with Mastot back in August in District Four. They had hired Hudson --
Stein, Hudson.
Howard Stein Hudson, yeah, I have it right here. Howard Stein Hudson, who did a fairly comprehensive analysis with several options in terms of what they would do at the traffic circle. And they're essentially going to adjust it a bit and pave it. The multi-million dollar project of potentially signalizing it, which I'm not sure that we all would like to do that anyway, was negated. But we'll keep you updated on that process. And certainly, once tech finishes their design, we'll have a public meeting and be able to talk with the community about their design and where we go with Complete Streets. So, that is a very exciting grant that we've received. The NRA deeds finally came in from the sub through KP Law. And that was quite a packet, but thank goodness the legislators didn't want us to copy 250 pages of deeds for them and accepted a Google, you know, cloud file. But we did send them a nice report that Andy Portman had put together, summarizing all of their research and where we are. So, we're hoping now that they're back in formal session. This involves land use, which requires a formal session to vote on. So, we'll certainly keep you updated as more information becomes available. I just really wanted to take a moment and publicly thank Andy Egmont, Youth Services, and all of her staff and the other agencies who helped to contribute and identify families in need in the greater Newburyport area. You can see just from the two pictures in my update, those were just two of the classrooms that were filled to the brim with gifts from all the families, or elves, if you will, that adopted families and helped to support 230 families in the greater Newburyport area to have a wonderful holiday. Great job by all there. I know that the council had met with our legislators, Senator DiZagio and Rep. Cal. We met with them before, just before you did. But just to give the public an idea of the kinds of topics that we are asking for help from the legislature, some of ours might be a little bit different than those that you discussed, but I think in general, we're essentially on the same page. Obviously, the Home Rule petition to dissolve the NRA is of high priority for us. We would also like to have some funding from the Environmental Bonda. That is money that was placed in the bond bill that is supposed to help protect behind the wastewater treatment facility, as well as Plum Island. So, we are hoping to see some of that funding released shortly. We also talked about the possibility of reaching out and developing a public safety bond at the state level because I talked to so many mayors and town managers, and everybody is in need of some type of public safety building or upgrade for fire or police. So, we'll see if anything comes of that, but we'll continue to advocate for that. Affordable housing continues to be a high priority. We asked if they would pull the original bill, our original act, Chapter 41(c)(1/2), take a look at that, and try to add an asset limit because I know that was the big issue with the council in terms of moving that forward. Chapter 90, road and sidewalk money, we certainly could use more of that. And asked them that to look at school funding also because I'm not convinced that we're going to see anything this year in this year's budget for increase in the school budget. We should know soon, though, because the governor's state of the state is on January 21st. And I will be attending that address. We have had several meetings over the last two weeks with the Army Corps of Engineer at their district office in Concord to talk about a 204. Actually, there's two dredging projects, one in Pisquataqua River in New Hampshire, as well as the Merrimack River. The priority, I think, for us is the Merrimack River dredge because it also improves the navigational channel safety and also provides compatible sand to put on our beaches. And particularly, we're looking for that placement at reservation terrace. So, we're continuing to work with them. The 204 study should be completed by the end of the summer. We also, the Army Corps is working on a 103 study for sand placement at Salisbury and Newbury. And it's important because all of the sand we get, we try to share equitably among all these hotspots and these great areas of erosion at this point. We've had MEMA out in -- they were first out to meet with us on November 14th, follow-up meeting with Matt, Julia's been in, working, Julia Goffert's in, our conservation agent. And they were out again today to talk about an emergency response. And it's not if, but when we have a breach on reservation terrace. It's really critical. And so, we've been trying to be proactive, reaching out to the governor, our legislative team, Army Corps, and MEMA. And we're -- there's been some changes at DCR. So, I'm encouraged by their response. We've had higher-level people from DCR joining us. The beach is their property. So, I will keep you posted. We're really looking for a big influx of sand for reservation terrace in the short term to get us through the next, maybe, two cycles before the rivers dredge. And then ultimately, we can hopefully protect the homes on reservation terrace. I would like to thank all the counselors who attended and the butters to the landfill, then Crow Lane, now Colby Farm, for the closure meeting we had with DEP. I thought it went really, really well. This has been a long, painful process for the city in terms of the closure of the landfill. But we still have questions, I think, for most of us at the meeting. We're pleased that Blue Wave is coming in and taking a negative and turning it into a positive. But there are still timely events that need to happen that is required of New Ventures that, since they've never met timelines in the past, even under court order, how are they supposed to beat timelines going forward? So, that's going to be some of our comments that are due on the 17th to DEP about the closure. But the good news is that it's finally going to be closed. Last week, on the 7th, we had a neighborhood meeting with Phillips Drive. Again, thank you to all the counselors who attended that meeting. After John Eric White and Diane Gannon, our engineers, presented an update on everything that has been done to date there, it was determined that they didn't want to wait internally for our engineering staff to do the design for construction because even though it could be a year, we know how we know how many projects that are before our engineering team. And so, we really do need to bring an outside consultant. So, there was an agreement at that meeting that we would bring in an outside consultant who would help design the next phase, which is construction, for the Phillips Drive neighborhood. DCAM had their public hearing on the appraisal, not on the appraisal, had their public hearing, which is required of the process, if they're going to surplus property, pretty straightforward. They just were looking for people to comment on whether or not it would be used for public benefit. And that essentially is what was presented by the public. We're hoping within the next two, two-and-a-half weeks, we will actually have the appraisal in our hands. And certainly, we'll share that with you as soon as we receive it. The RFP for the feasibility study for Youth Services, it seemed, since the appraisal was winding down, it was an appropriate time to put out that RFP for proposals. We had, I believe, 21 companies and 14 walked both sites because, if you recall, the council had asked administration to have the next feasibility study look at both moving to Low Street, as well as retaining Youth Services at the Brown School. So, that is what is the purpose of that study. The snow and ice policy you received today, I didn't know if you wanted to enter that into your record and make it a formal late file, but it is posted on the website. It was attached to the counselor's update, the snow and ice that they are looking for every year, for the snow policy. I think you actually got more detail in the snow presentation that was done. And all, there's a link here for all of the snow information that is posted on DPS' website. We've been doing, trying to do a little more training with staff. I mentioned to you, we did active shooter training. On the 12th, we had dealing with difficult people. And unfortunately, we've had some interactions in some of our offices that have been somewhat challenging, shall we say. So, this was, staff really, I think, got a lot out of this training. And if we go through MYA, this gives us points that helps reduce our insurance cost. So, it's win-win all around. The Cutter Fire Station, as we've talked about, we are actively looking at the 113 site across from St. John's. That will require, because we are looking at a new site, additional funding to complete the feasibility study and conceptual design. We should have that probably for you at your next meeting. We also asked Winter Street if, because we know we have, and in your capital plan, you have the need of both fire stations to be rehabbed. So, we were wondering if we could pull a couple components out of headquarters and incorporate them, say, emergency ops training and administrative offices into the new site. Would that then significantly decrease the work that needs to happen at headquarters? So, we don't want them to do a real deep dive on that site, but we want them to take a look at that and sort of help us to figure out, you know, does it make sense? Because as we know, every year we wait on construction, it's going through the roof. Had a breakfast with, annual breakfast at the Merrimack Valley Chamber on Friday with all the mayors and managers in the region. And we were joined by the Lieutenant Governor. It's a nice event that is well represented by businesses from all over the Merrimack Valley and gives an opportunity for us to give a five-to-seven-minute update on how each of our communities are doing. Happy to report that they have hired staff, and the hub is ready to start recording Planning Board and ZBA meetings, which is good news. I know that was something that was really important to several of the counselors. Plumber Spring Bridge, I just wanted, I'm not going to read that whole update that's in your paragraph, that's in your update. But essentially, West Newbury, we had received a $500,000 grant and used a portion of it to identify what was going on with the Plumber Street Bridge. It was closed in May of '18. And West Newbury really wants it open. We're right on the line in terms of sharing this bridge. So, they applied for a Mass Works grant. They're a small community. They're under a different program than we would be. They received $1 million, and you know it's in our capital plan for the following year. And so, we had agreed that we would share whatever the gap is in charge. So, that probably need to come up with anywhere between around $250,000 to $300,000 to renovate that bridge. So, we'll, we have time to work on that. I also had the opportunity to attend Mayor Gove and Mayor Fiorentini's inauguration. And I just also wanted to let you know that on February 6th, at 7:00 PM, at the Senior Community Center, I will be delivering the annual State of the City. And invited our legislators to come. And President Aigerman will be introducing me. And I thank you for agreeing to do that and look forward to the evening and hope you can all make it. And of course, all public is invited to attend that meeting also, that address.
Thank you, Mayor. The counselors have questions for the mayor. Seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving to the consent agenda.
Motion to waive the rules and accept the snow and ice plan into our agenda.
Second. Second? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There are none. Passes.
Sure. I don't need it.
Well, I do. The clerk has a copy. Consent agenda, please.
So, this evening, the consent agenda consists of the approval of the December 16th, 2019 minutes and the January 6th, 2020 minutes. We have one transfer, Transfer 66, which comes from two sources. NHS Exteria Woodwork, $110,000, and the Mullen Parking Lot, $9,000. That both go into CIP Sidewalk Repairs, $120,000. That's to go to Budget and Finance. Communication 213, City Council Committee Assignments, 2020, received and filed. Communication 214, Letter from Central Congregational Church Regarding CPA Funding and Historic Preservation. That's to go to Planning and Development. Communication 215, Letter Regarding Colby Farm Open Space Beautification. That's to go to Planning and Development also. Communication 216, Letter Regarding Banning Use of Glyphosate. That's to go to Public Safety. Communication 217, Class II Vehicle License Application. State Automotive Repair, that's to go to license and permits. Communication 218, Town and Country Half Marathon To Be Held June 14th, 2020. Again, Public Safety. Appointments. First reading. Appointment 132, George Sasse Jr., 37 Jefferson Street, to the Harbor Commission as an alternate until 11/13/2022. Appointment 133, Janet Morris, 288 Merrimack Street, to the Tree Commission until January 13th, 2023. Following our reap appointments. Appointment 134, Karen B. Weiner, 7 Lincoln Street, Affordable Housing Trust until 11/30/2022. Appointment 135, Paul B. Kadachi, 135 Beach Road, C5 Salisbury, City Constable until December 1st, 2022. Appointment 136, Gary Gorski, 18 Magnolia Street, to the Library Board of Directors until 11/2027. Appointment 137, Sarah T. Spalding, 280 High Street, Library Board of Directors until January 1st, 2027. Following appointment is to refer to Budget and Finance. Ethan Manning, 31 Howard Street, Director of Finance until 21/2023. Next is Anthony Farnari, to be referred to the Neighborhood and City Services Committee. 10 Olson Road, Pibody, Director of Public Works until 21/2023. Next is Dr. Robert Slocum, to be referred to Public Safety. Lives at 38 Jefferson Street, Vote of Help, January 13th, 2023. Met Mr. President as the Consent Agenda of the Seabees.
Any motions?
Motion to approve?
Second. Discussion? Oh, not permitted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Consent agenda passes. Moving on to the regular agenda. Mayor's update.
Motion to receive and file?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Okay. Two communications. Mr. Clerk?
So, we have Communication 211, City Council Rules 2020. They will look familiar. They are as they were at the end of last year. But every year, we must approve them.
Okay, so, under Rule 1B, we actually have to adopt them today. That doesn't mean we can't amend them later. And during Good of the Order, we'll discuss our retreat on Saturday, and I expect the rules to be ad-issued then. We'll notice it. But for now, are there any motions from the council?
So moved. I'd like to make a joint motion for an emergency preamble, as well as a motion to approve together, since we're taking it up on the first night.
I'm sorry, I should have explained. Because these are our own internal rules, it's not technically a measure under the charter. The charter provides, so we don't have to do emergency preamble. We can just adopt it tonight.
I think Counselor Vogel, motion to do so. I'll just second it then. Motion to approve?
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Next?
Would be City Council Schedule, 2020. Shall I read it into the record, Mr. President, or not?
I think that would be a bit tiresome, but if others object, anyone needed to read into the record? I will say this one, again, we have to adopt under Rule 1C. But I want to explain, in working with the clerk, for July and August, I was trying to find a way to have three meetings in those two months. But where exactly those three meetings fall in the two months were not particularly important to me or the clerk. And the way it fell out trying to get around Yankee Homecoming was the way that it's shown, with one meeting actually in July on the 13th, and then two in August. Labor Day is very late this year. I don't think it's till September 7th. So, although August 31 sounds like it's Labor Day weekend, it actually isn't. Any suggestions from counselors? Take a motion if you want to try changing something or discuss.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, passes. We don't have any appointments on secondary?
Point of order, the one we accept as late file? Is this a communication, so we could take this up? The snow and ice plan?
Sure, I'm just checking my hit list here. Okay. Why don't we, why don't you read that, Clerk Jones?
So, Snow and Ice Plan, 2019, 2020. It is certainly too long to read through it, but it is six pages long. It has an introduction, snow emergency parking ban, recitation of the places where one can park, designated parking areas, snow plowing, goes into some detail, sidewalks, which I should mention is removal, and the responsibility of tenants, occupants, and property owners, driveways, mailboxes, notifications. And that's it in a nutshell, Mr. President.
Motion to -- Motion to refer to Neighborhood and City Services?
Second.
Discussion? Yes?
I would just suggest that we consider receiving and filing. I don't know if there are desire to have a long conversation. We've done this in the past, but I'm not strongly opposed. I'm just saying, you know, is it informational or is there, you know, in terms of trying to keep committee work reasonable, I will be making these comments as we go and questioning whether, you know, is there work to be done here or is this informational for us to have?
Other comments from councilors? Counselor Connell?
Yeah, thank you, Council President. I think one of the reasons I was hoping to bring this into committee is that I know there was a public hearing, not public hearing, but a public meeting on this to go through it and to hear from the public. And not many people were able to attend in terms of the general public. So I would like to see us just have this in front of the residents again and as well as committee, go through it a little bit more, have DPS there as well. And I think it would just behoove us. And I don't see it taking a long time, but to me, it would be, I think, beneficial to residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor referring to Neighborhood and City Service, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That's it for communications. I don't think I forgot anything. Thanks for pointing that out. I skipped the snow and ice plan. Appointments? We don't have any second readings yet. We will next time. Onto orders.
First orders, 164, Mr. President. It's City Council Accepts With Gratitude, a gift from the Josephine and Nora Connors Scholarship Trust in the amount of $5,000 submitted by Counselor Tontar.
Counselor Tontar.
I move that we refer to the Committee on Budget and Finance.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's referred. Order 165.
Which is, the City Council approves the following license contractor application for 2020 construction near Greener Group LLC out of Lowell, Massachusetts, submitted Counselor's seed.
Motion to refer to Public Utilities?
Tag it.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Orders? We have none. Committee reports. Budget and Finance.
None, Mr. President.
Shocking. Education. Yes, Counselor Connell?
Thank you. I don't know if I stand for committee reports, but thank you for, you know, choosing me to be the chair. I am waiting. The school committee will be having their next meeting. They deferred it to January 21st, at which time I will find out who will be the other three school committee participants on the education committee. At that point, I do plan on sending out the dates for the year for when we'll be meeting. And I would like to meet with Council President, too, to talk a little bit about the goals and the objectives of the education committee moving forward this year. Thank you.
Thank you. General Government, I'd share that one. There is nothing in committee at this time. License and permits?
Nothing.
Nothing, report. Neighborhood and City Service are actually three holdovers.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Planning and Development?
Nothing at this time.
How very boring. Public Safety?
No update.
Public Utilities?
Nothing tonight.
Rules?
Nothing tonight.
All right. I think we beat the over-under tonight. Good of the Order. Counselor Connell?
Mr. President, through to the members, I just wanted to know if the clerk has had the opportunity to distribute copies of the items that were carried over from the last year into this current year so that they can participate fully in the committee activities?
I have not. Star, Mr. President, if I can answer that. I have not, but I certainly would. So in other words, in Neighborhood and City Services, would you like copies, paper copies to all members, digital copies?
However they'd prefer to receive them, paper or digital?
Looks like we're split, digital?
Digital's fine.
Digital's fine. Wonderful. Digital's fine. Okay. I will do that.
Good catch. Other comments? Counselor Connell?
Thank you, Council President. I wanted to see for our retreat, which is coming up on this Saturday, the 18th, if we could, I'd like to see if the group's okay if we start earlier at possibly 8:00 AM and go until 10:00 AM. But I'm willing to negotiate to 9:00 AM if that's better. But I wanted to first throw out 8:00 AM.
Show of hands?
I should have said also, we'll go over this during the retreat, but Good of the Order, you don't have to observe motion practice, it's just informal. So we can really just take a straw poll right now. I'm sure we'll be the only people in the building, whether it's 8:00 AM, 9:00 AM, or 10:00. So just to straw poll, how about a show of hands who can handle 8:00 AM with coffee?
I'm not.
Well, yeah, two councilors are not going to attend. I realize that. Okay, how about a counter, the backup offer of nine? Can we live with nine? Okay, it looks like nine. Sorry, eight is just too draconian. So we'll go nine to 11, and Clerk Jones and I will make sure that there's coffee and num nums and all that. As to agenda, feel free to mention things now during Good of the Order. It's perfectly proper under the rules, but we can follow up by email as well. We are going to post it as a meeting. If members of the public want to attend, they're welcome. I do want to cover, of course, our rules, especially for the new members, because there's some arcane ones. There are some rules I'd like to tweak. We made an experiment, for example, on having transfers sponsored by a counselor. That actually was the rule the last two years, but we really never observed it, so maybe that's one we want to look at again. Other things that people want to air out here, or really feel free to do it by email, too, it's fine. Just remember, I have to post by Thursday. I guess that's it. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. We're adjourned.